Sure, again, my name is Chris Groner, longtime resident of Oregon City. I actually was born here, Oregon City High School, and happy to be serving on the commission.
Right. Thanks for having me. We're glad to have you.
I'm Carter Stein. I'm from Place Neighborhood Association. I've been involved in strength community over there and want to have the opportunity to help Oregon City grow.
Excellent. Glad you're here. Let's do that again. No, I'm... So, let's move forward then. This evening, we have a public hearing... Oh, wait a minute. We have no adoption for a planning commission meeting this evening, so we'll move on to the hearing. Tonight, we have a commission resolution for support of the Historic Review Board's adoption of the proposed guidelines for new construction in the historic district.
Thank you.
And with that, do I need to read my...
Nope.
I think I don't.
Nope.
Okay, excellent. Well, we'll just skip on to Christina.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Powell. I want to give everyone a little update of where we are in the process, especially for our two commissioners, new commissioners, while they were at the work session, maybe the long view a little bit of how we got where we are today. When both historic districts were created early 80s, we adopted some design guidelines for new construction. They were paged along, and they looked at kind of broad compatibility requirements. And there has kind of been a long-going consensus that we want to... The city and the neighborhood associations wanted to update those to give more guidance. Many times, people would look at the design guidelines and have very different interpretations of what that meant, and that really led to conflicts where what we wanted is to promote good infill development into historic districts. We applied for a certified local government grant through the Historic Preservation Office, and we awarded the request for proposal to Rob Dorknak and his consulting team. Rob and his team met with neighborhood association stakeholders, real estate and developers, real estate agents, developers, and city staff to come up with these guidelines over the spring. We had numerous city commission, planning commission, historic review board work sessions this summer to talk a lot about how this affects economic development, especially along the Seventh Street corridor. And the version that you were given at the workshop, which is the August 2006 version, is the version we're putting forth for adoption. The other version that we were working with previous was the May 2006, so this August one is supplanting that. In my memo, I spelled out the next steps after this planning commission hearing. If the commission chooses to adopt, chooses to adopt a resolution of support, we will forward this to the city commission where they will hold their own hearings. And the final adoption of the design guidelines will happen at the Historic Review Board level. These guidelines are really exactly what they are guidelines. They're not codified. They're not part of our city ordinance. They're specifically not created as a black and white. They are a working document to have people create compatible infill. We still have in our 1740 ordinance, which is the historic overlay ordinance, the actual code that requires compatible infill. This is a supplement to that. And so, people have had some questions of why exactly are we holding these hearings on the planning city commission level? And one is to make sure everyone's on the same page, and we're looking at future infill in these districts and landmarks, and for the planning commission to understand maybe some future issues that may come out of this. One, we've already talked about, which is future parking issues if Seventh Street becomes developed to a higher density. And on the city commission level, they will receive all the appeals or any appeals that come, and so they need to be on board with the one with the same vision document. And so, that's why we're taking these for public hearings for both you, the planning commission, and the city commission. But the actual adoption will happen at the Historic Review Board level in September, if it's that I've spelled out in the memorandum for tonight workout. Next date for planning, excuse me, for city commission will be September 6th at 7:00, and it'll either, it'll be adopted by Historic Review Board either at their 18th... Let's see, it'll be either at the September 18th meeting, or the September 28th meeting, or a meeting that we properly notify. I guess the question is, if the planning commission has any questions or issues that they felt weren't addressed to the level that they felt comfortable with the work session, I'm here to answer any questions for you.
Well, I just, while we've got airtime here, and I want to, I have a couple of questions that I'd like to answer.
Okay.
And I guess my question is, while they are guidelines, in fact, they are guidelines. And if the question comes up, if you read something in here that says, "Yet, there may be needed, there may be occasions where alternative designs are desired or needed." Could you go into a little more detail about what that process is? If you've got somebody developing a lot, and the alternative, or they've come up with some designs that 95% are required, and there's 5% that don't, and what's the next step? Is... Could you go through that process?
Sure. The idea is, if you follow these guidelines, it's kind of a far better process. You are, have a very high chance of getting a project approved. If, for reasons of your own issues or maybe constraints on the site, you choose to, we call it, propose an alternative design, which on page three of the guidelines, to it a little bit more in detail, you're deviating from the design guidelines. You still have the higher purpose that's assigned to you, which is to put, to put compatible infill. So, the onus starts to move more on you, on how you, as the developer or the applicant, are going to provide compatible infill. And what we have said is, you still need to go back to the design principles which are in here, and looking at where are you, going back to the history of what district you're in, and showing how you're still meeting the large intent of the design guideline. Maybe a specific criteria, especially in the elements section or the design section, you can't meet or do not want to meet, but you can provide an alternative you think is just as compatible. It's up to you to use the design principles to show how that's compatible.
Okay. And second question I have is regarding materials used. There was some discussion at our last meeting, talking about different materials that, you know, were appropriate, that weren't appropriate. At what level is that resolved? And would that be considered alternative design in the materials?
Well, we have here what materials are allowable. For windows, you do need to match the, what is the actual... You need to match the form and... Let me actually get to the specific page so I can speak to this. I'm looking at the... What? I'm looking at the elements section. Let's see, I haven't seen it. Oh.
Okay, so, for instance, window residential.
Yeah.
Match the member sizing.
Page 63.
Member sizing, thickness, and shadow line of tinted wood windows. Okay, so, in my mind, that preference would be wood windows.
Preference would be wood windows.
Yeah. But does it's... And it says, "Wood clad except with matching."
All right.
I guess, is it too general, or is it just, as you said earlier, is it meant to be general, or are we going to be putting ourselves in a position where everything is going to have to come up with city commission?
That's a very good question. What we've tried to do is to anticipate future technology, which is always hard to do. We want to write our guidelines that talk about future technology in regards to its compatibility. Today, vinyl windows can't meet the standard that you just spelled out. In the future, it may be able to. Fiberglass, it goes a long way, but, you know, there's some discussion if it meets it. Basically, the, how it's proposed right now is if you are proposing anything other than a wood or a wood clad window, you need to bring a sample of it to the hearing to show how you feel it meets the specific criteria of, you know, the sizing, thickness, shadow, and depth of the window.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. Gentleman?
Yeah, during the last meeting, there was, the word sunset came up as in, and I don't, is that how you would interpret this? I thought it was more, it would continue, be reviewed next year, but is that...
It's not, it's not a specific sunset. It's in within one year of the adoption date, the historic review, but actually, it's in, it's added to the resolution.
What will be the process for review?
The process would be, one year from the state, the date of adoption, the Historic Review Board will come back to both the planning commission and city commission with their recommendations for any amendments or changes based on their experience within the last construction year. We'll kind of go through the same process again, modified.
Right.
And then, we'll make any change. I mean, there may be no changes, might be some, and maybe a lot, we don't know.
Right. Okay.
Were the, were the changes that were brought up at the work session a week or two ago included in the draft that we're approving?
Yes, they were.
Okay. Any other comments? Yeah, we'll move forward. Is there anyone from the, can someone speak, or do we just... Well, we'll have...
Eileen Fitzsimmons is here from Rob Dorknak Associates, and she's available to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. But you don't look like you want to present anything, so...
Rob's out of town, Catholic, and so he has just covered some of the most of any things that were resolved, certainly in the state of the project.
Okay. Well, thank you. I'm glad you're here. Okay, well, at that point, I will open it up for the, to the public, and we'll follow the process. Those that are supportive of this application, or, sorry, not application of this resolution, come forward and will speak. And I've only got one so far. Do I have more? So, since I have Mr. Winterhalters, I will have you come up.
Mr. Winterhalter's going to use our computer too, so I'm gonna...
Okay.
Do you want me to sit over there?
Yeah. Yeah.
And please introduce yourself and the city and where you live.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. My name is Rick Winterhalter. I am the current chair of the Historic Review Board, and I live at 1215 Eighth Street in Oregon City. So, I'm going to speak largely in support. I have a couple of things of which the board is a little bit concerned about, and want to share that with you. And then, at some point, run through a series of slides and try to go through fairly quickly so that you kind of get a feel for what we're, what we're talking about when we get to that. So, I think first of all, of course, you know, it needs to be noted, and the attention and the dedication that the city staff has given to this thing the whole way through, most notably Ms. Robertson Gardner. She shares a passion of assuring the development in this city. Historic districts, you know, mirrors the scale and the proportion, the designs that we're, that we're after, and things that I heard from citizens throughout the 15 years that I've here. So, it's, I think we're very fortunate in that regard. And under her guidance, the city secured a grant, as she mentioned, and we wound up with a fantastic team of Mr. Dorknak and Eileen Fitzsimmons, William Morrow, Eileen Yee, who threw themselves at this project, and with efforts and time commitments worthy of a grant that would have cost us much more. So, I think we're very fortunate indeed to have all these people on board, and I think that needs to be noted. Sometimes we forget to do that, because as volunteers, it'd be hard, I think, to do what we do without, you know, all these folks. So, you know, there are a lot of reasons why the guidelines are needed at this time, and one of the biggest ones for the board and the volunteers sitting on the board is that we get, we eliminate some of those interpretive areas and areas of conflict that Ms. Robertson Gardner's already alluded to, and we wish to provide the applicants with some clear guidelines and allowing them the opportunity to know exactly where they would need to raise issues of variances and that sort of thing with the board, so they would clearly understand what it was that was expected when they came forward. The guidelines, we're trying to follow some of the things that the planning commission has very clear guidelines of smittles, that sort of thing. So, that's what, that's really what we're after here. And our new comprehensive plan that the city adopted several years ago speaks clearly about this city's intent to continue the value of the historic overlay districts that were established in 1982. The city is, we're currently poised to receive a tremendous amount of interest from the development community, and you folks are, in your role, you know, in your positions on the planning commission are more aware than most, most of us, and it's really no matter longer, or no longer a matter of when development's coming, it's how we're going to manage that, that development that's coming. The city has been admitted to its slogan so far, building, preserving the past and building the future, and I, from city, you know, the support from the city and from this body, I think that's going to, going to continue and benefit all of us. However, that being said, there are a few areas of the new construction guidelines before you that the HRB and citizens have few concerns about, and we kind of want to make you aware of them as, as we move forward, let you decide how, you know, you want to, you want to fall on those. One of the things that, I just want to make the point, that the Historic Review Board really wants to ensure that the development in these areas receives the highest scrutiny towards materials used when building. It is our belief that these two historic districts are set aside as special areas of the city. Any new construction should be the highest custom quality and not simply built on the same material package as a speculative track home. So, that's kind of outside your purview, but I think I wanted to make that said. And then, on another aside, and I think Ms. Robertson Gardner alluded to it, and something that we're all going to have to, I think, really pay attention to here in the upcoming months and over this next year, is any commercial construction occurring in McLaughlin District or almost any district within the city is constantly battling the parking requirements of the underlying zone. So, this would require each and every development coming before this body, the planning commission, after they've come to the Historic Review Board, whom they're sitting on at the time, to receive a variance in order to build the development. And so, it seems to us that there's a real necessity for a parking management plan, and it's paramount, the development of the historic and other districts with the city. So, we kind of wanted to let you know, we'd certainly be willing to work with, with everybody on that. The other concern more directly involving this body is found on page 1921 of this August 2006 version, and this can be found on the city's webpage, addressing the commercial instruction in the McLaughlin District. As some of you may recall, the two new members may not, the first draft of these guidelines as produced by the team had a height limit of 36 feet in the guidelines, and this height allowed a streetcar commercial design, the predominant design of the commercial districts in the period of historical significance, as represented by the Oddfellows Hall and the current Carriage House Music Store, to have three stories. At first, this position was opposed by the Historic Review Board and McLaughlin Neighborhood Association. However, after discovering, at the time, we were unaware of the height of those buildings were the actual height, we discovered that the Oddfellows Hall was 34 feet. Further conversation with Mr. Dorknak and the team, the HRB, and I believe the McLaughlin Neighborhood Association and other members, although I can't speak from, or at least members of the association, that the limit of 36 feet was reasonable to maintain the proportion and scale of the district. So, let me, and, well, this original contention was presented to the city, and this, we were concerned about the 36 feet, and it's based on a comment of a development consultant that, for the discussion with the city's planning consultant was requested. And there was a comment made during that time that the, the guideline should allow the height of the underlying zone to fail as the maximum height, which is there on page 1, about the fifth bullet down. And as noted in the letter, this has been extended, and this is what's before you this evening. The commission, I think, believes, and answers as well, that the language there that allows you to build to the compatibility of existing, you know, those existing historic things will, will be enough to keep the heights down. However, I think one of the, as I stated earlier, one of the purposes of the guidelines are to kind of ratchet down a little bit. There are a lot of things that, in the historic overlay districts, that do not, that occur differently than the underlying zone. And we, the Historic Review Board is concerned that even for the next year, that we will find ourselves in conflict with developers as they come forward. And so, just if we can, if you can bear with me for a minute, and I won't spend too much time on these, just to give you a feel, or some of the things that I saw, and hopefully this is going to work. I think it takes a minute here. There it is. Okay. So, just real quickly, if I can figure out how to do this left-handed. Okay. Or not. Ah, this is a little frustrating, but this kind of gives you a sense of what Seventh Street looked like in the time, the period of historical significance. This is a little early on in the period. This is, what?
What is the period?
Eight, as I recall, it's about 1870 to about 1925.
Is that in the document?
It is, and, yeah, it's in there. I had to, as well, but it is in there. So, but you get the little feelings. This is the Carriage House, formerly the Far Sore. This is the Oddfellows, currently housing the Black Point Inn there on the corner. And these are just some areas that come from, now, this building is a little taller. I do not know the height of the building, but it is probably taller than 36 feet, but at least you're getting, you can kind of get proportion and scale as you look at the, you know, the other buildings on the street. These are before and after pictures of redevelopment areas. Another look of downtown and neighborhood commercial areas, kind of get a feel for what's going. And these are all vibrant, you know, areas throughout the country, and these are buildings of the same historic period. Granted, land prices are probably less expensive in these areas, I will give you that. Just another look. Another look. Now, just to share, and this is a larger building, obviously, just looking down the street, you know, of what, what street looks like, very similar to, you know, what our street looked like, just trying to get a feel for what we're talking about. Again, these are before and after pictures. Now, here's a development that's currently underway, North Street Project in city of Milwaukee. Didn't have actual pictures, it's the artist rendering. I'm sure folks have been by. There's the Masonic Lodge next to, about the same height as the Oddfellows Hall, so it kind of gives you a scale. Granted, this is a four-story building also, so we'll grant you that. It just kind of gives, gives a feel. The planner that this, that we spoke with and had conversations with, this is kinds of the visions and what they've come, I think, fantastic developments, great redevelopment projects that they've done, truly will work well in, in other areas of the city. Looking forward to, to seeing some of these in our city, not in historic district. Again, this is their concept of residential. If you look up in the upper left-hand corner, you'll see what they see as multifamily. Nicely proportional, nicely scaled, nice three-story buildings, not of the historic period. This is their, you know, their activity and their viewpoint of what historic renovation is, is in, they just have a larger, you know, larger scale look. That's, that's where they're coming at it when they talk, speak to us. And again, just a reminder of what the proportion and scale we, these members of the board currently have in mind, and so that's, so it's just a little, little difference in why we have a concern. I think we'll constantly be up against somebody wanting to do something larger, and we'll be back into the subjective thing. So, we have, that's one of the concerns, that it will not be possible to build a 40-foot, 35-foot-high building, meeting the proportion and scale of the period of historical significance. And so, there's, there are a lot of us that are concerned, and when people come to this part of the city, this historic part of the city, they should experience the manifestation of slogan, preserving our past, building our future. This should look very different. It should feel like a Hawthorne area, not the Bridgeport Village area. So, we just believe that there are an abundance of development opportunities outside of this district to allow this new urbanization to materialize. Materialize, and in fact, currently, and so, we're pleased to have the support of this body in the city commission. However, we'd really like to see a reduction in that height, if possible, if you, if you would feel that was also worthy, if we could take a look at that over the next year and then revisit that at the end of the year, instead of the other way, and maybe allowing some things that we may not be as pleased with. So, we're just, we're just afraid that we were going to get a disagreement with the development community in promoting more appeals that nobody really wants. We want this to be, you know, something that guides good development and doesn't, isn't perceived as a bear. That's not what we're after here. So, really appreciate your support of the document, and look forward to moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Any questions? This speaker. Oh, great. Thank you very much. Next, Phil Yates.
I can facilitate a fight with him. And my wife and I own a property, a building, a condo, which is the next development. We'll be redeveloping, of course, the next few years, not exactly. I've read these things. I have quite a few of the same concerns that my wife has on her perspective. I've been faced with guidelines, we have one down to 45 feet, basically, like, three stories, five feet. It troubles me that you'll have a set of guidelines that applies to a zone with that much inconsistency. I mean, it just invite appeal. It just seems to me that a developer who wants to push it is going to appeal every time, and it's going to become a political issue every time somebody wants to build higher than 36 feet. So, it strikes me that there ought to be, I mean, there ought to be a policy call. How high is high enough? And there ought to be a limit. There ought to be clear, it seems to me, whether it's high or low, there ought to be a number picked. And I think really that the number to be picked, I think, has to, is a difficult choice because it's sort of a complicated issue with respect to retail. The Oddfellows Building has got 16-foot floors. The building that I own, the old Highfield Building, has a six-foot first floor. Apparently, that's sort of minimum these days for successful retail operations, which is my understanding the city wants on Seventh Street, is successfully retail operation. So, if you're going to have a building which is compatible with the Oddfellows, you're going to need 16-foot first floor, compatible with the Highfield, which I'd like to keep. Well, if you have a 16, if you have a 16-foot first floor, you are going to have a really hard time building a three-story building, and maybe you don't. Maybe, maybe you want limited to two stories like Rick does, but I would suggest to you that that may not be the best way to develop Seventh Street. So, really, that, it's a, I think it's a fundamental issue that you need to, that you need to resolve, which is are you going to develop Seventh Street with, in his vision, which is a two-story thing, because that's the way it was in the historical period from whatever, 17, excuse me, ATD to 19, whatever. If they never had three-story buildings, we don't want three-story buildings, then say that. Say no three-story buildings, and have, you know, and then you'll have two-story buildings built that, you know, and that'll happen. People will build them. They may not make as much money, it may not happen as fast as if you had a different rule, but it strikes me that it's bad public policy to have guidelines which are going to engender appeals, and that's what you're creating by having this... And that's what you're creating by having this compromised language, it seems to me on page 19, which says, the underlying zone can stay 45, and we're not going to say, you have to stick it 36, we're just going to give you this touchy-feely, you know, try to convince us that you're right kind of thing. It's going to eat up corporate resources, your resources, C resources, and it seems to me, take a call, period. I'd prefer the higher as a developer. I'm, I'm too new in the ci, I live here too, you know, I'm too new in the city, I think, to tell you how to do it. Whatever you do, pick it up and say, that's it. That's my suggestion with that, with respect to the height thing. The parking thing is really a troubling issue for a developer because of the existing, you're required something like four spaces for every thousand feet of retail, and you're required various parking lots for the different size multifamily dwellings. There's an oddity in your code and your parking, because this is not quite with respect to the historical guidelines, all sort of fall together because it goes into the next question, which is what kind of housing is going to be permitted. There's an oddity in the code, which looks to me to be intentional, that only requires one parking space if the dwelling is a, includes the dirt. In other words, if there's, if it's not a condominium where you're sharing, if it's not apartment house, instead a row house, then you're only required to have a space per housing unit. If you are an apartment house and you have two bedrooms, you're required one and a half. If you've got three, it's required 1.75. So there's a bias in the code for row house type development opposed to condominium apartment house construction, at least in the parking code. And yet, on page 19 of your document, it says, row houses aren't allowed in Oregon City, or row houses aren't appropriate in Oregon City. Now, I heard this for the first time last week, Christina, I was a little shocked because that's what I was planning on doing on the backside of my property. I was going to put, draw lines in the ground, this is what I was thinking. Seems to me that feasible ownership of row houses is better than condominiums where you create something that you can't change, except MUC or bomb, because these CNRs between these condo rules, it's very hard to change a condominium once it's set up. So my thought was to create individual lots. And I've been told there was a place in Lake Oswego recently that might satisfy the Historic Review, I think. So I went over there and looked at one. There's, there is a brand-new development right off A Street, Lake Oswego. Have you seen it, Christina?
Uh-uh.
It's row houses, it's got live, work, you know, units. Christina told me the other day that she didn't, the housing that is north of Belmont and the Belmont Dairy District would work down here. I don't know what would work down here, really. I haven't, I'm sort of a newbie at this historical, new construction stuff, but it seems to me, you need to make a decision when you say no row houses. Do you really want to, do you really want to force the construction apartment houses rather than allow people to have individual ownership, 20, 25, excuse me, 20-foot-wide lots, which is permitted in the, in the MUC zone? That's a permitted use, 20-foot, you know, zero-lot line housing units. That's a permitted use in the MUC zone, and yet the guidelines say you can't have it. And once again, that's an inconsistency, and it seems to me you ought to strive to avoid inconsistencies. A final point I'd like to make about these guidelines, I do with materials. It strikes me that there are a couple of ways that you can approach trying to retain the historical nature of Oregon City. And one way would be to maintain the look from that, that sort of small buildings. And another way would be to assure that you only had materials that were used in the historical period. So all this may be stupid for me as a developer to suggest this. It seems to me a lot easier and consistent with historic preservation to simply, and this is again, this is clarity, it may be more expensive for the developers, but just say wood windows, period. And then if you've got vinyl windows with five or six years from now can satisfy the concerns that people have about making the windows look historical, then change your rules then. But let's just say, make wood win, I mean, I'm living in a house now and I'm, it's expensive, wood windows, I know. And I'm developing commercial property, and I know it's going to be expensive to have wood windows. But if you're in a historical district, and you have to make, you know, defer to that by increasing your costs in some way, it strikes me that the way to increase your costs in a way which makes, you know, Oregon City vibrant and growing and not locked into a moving, that it seems to me that that vision locks into, that would be the better approach. And that would allow Oregon City to evolve in an historically significant way. That'd be my four points. One, you've got to deal with this parking issue, I think. It's, it's going to cause variances and appeals, no matter what, I think. The height issue seems to me to be just what's consistently, whatever the choice is. And then I think they need to make some policy calls about what kind of housing you want in this MUC zone, because if you say no row houses, then you won't get row houses, and I'm not sure that's what you want.
Thank you. I appreciate your comments. Okay. Anyone else like to speak? No?
Are you going to say anything?
Actually, you can do it to Commissioner Powell.
Thank you. Denise McGriff.
Denise McGriff, and I'm representing McLaughlin Neighborhood Association. I am the Land Use Chairperson for Neighborhood Association, and also want to let you know I have been participating as Karen Peterson and Rick and Phil and, well, I think I've made almost all the meetings, Karen's probably made them all, but in this process to develop the design guidelines. But I do want to say that having had experience, professional experience in administering the city's Historic Review Board staff, as a staff of that board, and also as a person who is keenly interested in historic preservation and also lives in the historic district, I think that, again, I'd like to echo what Rick said and basically say that I think that this goes a long way toward clarifying the things that I used to have to explain using pictures, other examples from other communities, and also sometimes just kind of going out there and describing it. And I don't draw very well, so you can well imagine how that looks sometimes. But I think, I want to, I want to say that our neighborhood association strongly supports this, and we were working very hard with Christina and the other city staff to get this grant to try to bring this project to fruition. I want you to know that it's been a lot of long hours by many people reading these and going over them and having very lively discussions. Nobody, you know, hurt anybody, but that's good, because I think in, in reality, we all want the same thing. The reason that Oregon City established an overlay zone is because it felt, and its citizens felt, that both the Kanema and McLaughlin Neighborhoods were unique and special places. I'm not saying that Rivercrest isn't even special, or that Park Place isn't unique special, but again, of the historic period of Oregon City, those two places really embody the character-defining features of our community. And it's as such, an overlay district is an important tool to help make sure that area has some continuity, not that it can't change, not that it can't evolve, because all historic districts do that to some degree. And we're not trying to freeze a certain time period saying only this or this, but really look at the period of our district. And if any of you've lived here for a number of years, you kind of know that the years many of the people who've moved into McLaughlin have painstakingly restored their homes, done things to make improving, improve that area. We lobbied very hard to the city council on taking some of the urban renewal funding, and I know that's very controversial, but I think that the Carnegie Center and the fire station are testament to the early beginnings of our community, and it's important that that restoration of the Carnegie Center removes some of the things that we thought were a good idea at the time in the 1970s. And I say we collectively, obviously none of us were here, maybe some of you were as children, but at the time, they thought that was a great idea, you know? Every time I'd walk by that with my son, I'd go, God, I wish they'd take that off. And by golly, we took it off, and we were able to do some ADA requirements and other things to make the building more accessible, but yet retain the historic integrity. And that kind of gets me to where we think that these guidelines and standards need to go. The fact that the McLaughlin, and I'll speak specific to the McLaughlin Neighborhood, although I can speak to Kanema as well, but the McLaughlin Neighborhood is a very unique area. I personally chose it as the location of my home because I wanted to buy a historic house and I wanted to be a steward. And I think that that's what we're doing here with these new design guidelines, is we are continuing our heritage of stewardship for that particular area of the city and helping it maintain and become vibrant. I understand, working in, as a person who works in the development community, that, you know, there are certain things that we need to look at when we're looking at redevelopment. But I think in this case, I'm going to speak more broadly in the sense of Oregon City and the fact that development's going to come, and I don't have any objection to that. But what I would surely hope that we all want in Oregon City is that that development that comes this particular area of the city, or any area of the city, fits into that area. I am not talking about, you know, somebody taking the square peg and trying to jam into a round hole. If they want to develop in the historic districts of either parts of our city, or even on individual landmarks, then they really need to follow the design guidelines that are in place, not make it something else. The reason we have those in place is, again, it goes back to that stewardship issue. One of the things that we have a concern about, as Rick did mention, is that we've wrestled with this height issue. And while I would like to say that I think that the development community should have as much flexibility as possible, I don't think that's the case in this particular neighborhood. And just for the record, I did not hear Rick say that he proposed two stories. I heard him say that there was some debate at the Historic Review Board about the height, but nobody, I, any of the meetings I participated in, that they wanted to limit the height to two stories, and I think that that's unrealistic. I think that we want a little more specificity in terms of how that overlay district is, is administered. And I think based on everything that I've talked to, I happen to sit right now on the AIA Historic Resources Committee for the Portland chapter, and so I have the, the pleasure of meeting every month with a lot of architects, and you know how they all have varying opinions. And so I've kind of asked some of them who deal with historic preservation a lot, what they thought about this, and I didn't give them any more detail. But I think somewhere between 38 and 39 feet is going to be adequate. It would be compatible with the ILOF Hall, it'll be compatible with the other buildings. I don't think that 45 feet is really appropriate for the McLaughlin Neighborhood, primarily because it's too tall. You get into that whole issue of scale and bulk, and the height really will make a lot of difference. If you saw that picture of the facility in Milwaukee, and realize that that is not a historic district down there, but unfortunately, the buildings there really dominate that Elks Club, and it's a really nice, interesting old building. Now, Milwaukee does not have, you know, forgive me for Milwaukee, I have many friends in Milwaukee, they do not feel about preservation in the same way this community does. They have not adopted some of the same types of standards and guidelines. So just from the standpoint of how that might look, I have to think about Oregon City for the long term. In the near term, I plan to, you know, be a steward for my property as long as I, you know, am physically and financially and mentally able to do that. You know, someday I'm not going to be able to live there and hoof up those steps, but for now, that's what I'm going to try to do. And so I think we have to look at the long-term vitality of neighborhood and look at it from the standpoint of whatever gets built wherever in that neighborhood, it is going to be there. Those people may not be there, but the city will still be here, and we have to be able to look at that and say, yeah, that works, that's something that's really complimentary to our neighborhood. And again, everybody's going to think complimentary and compatible means something different. And I think, you know, bless Don Stadler's heart, and by the way, he's not a planner. He is an urban designer and an architect, and there's nothing wrong with those guys because I work with them all the time. But I think, again, you know, the new urbanism is a really interesting concept, and what it really is saying is that they're trying to get back to what we already have in McLaughlin Neighborhood, and what we have in Kanema, and what we have in Elyville, and what we have in some places in Park Place, which is really ironic, because what goes around is coming around again. They're just calling it neo-traditional or whatever, you know, whatever new little buzz. But it's really what we already have. Now, they're talking about density, and again, I would, would say, McLaughlin is probably more dense than any other part of the city, bar none. My lot is 3,500 square feet. Now, my house goes that way instead of that way, but it is dense. You know, our neighbors are right around, we're in very close quarters, so we have a high density already. I think the reason that these design guidelines talked about row houses is that they are really an East Coast manifestation. You would not have found those types of dwellings here in any period. You don't see them in Portland, which sort of paralleled our development and shot ahead after they dredged the Columbia and the Willamette. But I don't think that the city is against row houses. I think they are supportive of row houses where row houses are appropriate, but I think I would concur with Rick in the fact that row houses probably not, are probably not appropriate for the McLaughlin Neighborhood. Again, we're trying to maintain and preserve kind of what we have, having new things blend in, and the new stuff can blend in. I've seen it, I've reviewed them. There's a lot of ways you can do things, and I think there's a lot of creative folks out there, and I would agree with Phil in the sense that I don't think I want to be up here, month after month, with you arguing about a variance for the height, because I don't think that's going to serve us well at all. And it's going to be hard to meet, the standards for variance are very difficult, and that's why they should, that's where they should be. So let me switch gears real quickly and talk a little bit about the parking issue, and the reason I'm bringing it up, as well as the other people did, is that I think it is going to be a problem. I think that our parking regulations haven't been reviewed since probably Kathy Galbraith was here, and that's going back into the early 80s, I think, because she was here before me. And they aren't really current, and I think that the city needs to immediately undertake a park review, and whether it's creating a park management plan, or a transportation management plan, or whatever we need to take a look at that, I would really like to see the Plan Commission initiate that, because it is going to be really problematic. It's probably already problematic. Already, since the Black Point Inn has opened, I've seen an increase in parking and congestion, not only by that intersection, because, you know, maybe not all those people are coming from this area, some of them are, and they know, but, you know, you've got cars coming and people opening doors, and they're trying to jockey for parking, and then they're parking in front of the fire station, which I think that is an emergency problem. But what I don't want is I don't want to have parking spill over into the residential area. We already had some of that problem when the, when the juries were meeting before the city built that parking lot, and so there are some areas of the neighborhood, like where I live, have a two or parking limit. Now, how well it's enforced, I don't know, but we haven't had any problem with our house, but, you know, it's only a matter of time. So we have to really look at that. Again, I would encourage you all to, to really take a look at parking regulations and initiate a study so that we can kind of get more current to what is kind of going on in other jurisdictions. Now, there's going to be a balance, because in a lot of the areas that I work in, in the city of Portland, they have no parking, and I don't think that's the answer either. But if any of you saw Sunday paper now, I don't want us in any way to emulate Bridgeport Village, but there was an interesting article about the parking problem that they have there, and it's just going to continue to get worse, or people will just not go there anymore. And it is, it is problematic. About a month ago, my husband and I, spur of the moment, decided we'd go over there to go to the movies. That's never going to happen again, I can tell you that. We actually found a space, didn't have to drive around, but we found one, but it was kind of, it was pretty bad. And from here, it's not like you're going to walk Bridgeport Village or take a bus. You're, you're going to, you're going to drive there. So thank you very much, and I'd be happy to answer any questions about the historic design guidelines, any of the, we've talked about over the months that we've been working this. I think the parking statement speaks for itself. And I appreciate the fact that you all are hearing this and that hopefully you are supportive of all the efforts, and that I hope that you will recommend approval of your resolution of support.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Thank you, Denise.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Have any other speakers? No. Questions from you folks?
I have a question for Christina. Refresh my memory on how the city measures actually height.
Okay.
Let's say, because we've got a lot of sloping seats, we'll talk about either, either district.
Sure. We measure it depending if it's residential architecture or if it's... We measure it depending if it's residential architecture or if it's commercial.
Okay, let's take.
Well, commercial, if you have a parapet, it would be at the top of the parapet.
From, but let's say the building's on a slope. I mean, we have a lot of buildings that are coming down a hill that, there's the short end, here's the high end.
Oregon measures it at the midpoint. So if you have point A at one side of the building and point B here, we're going to measure it.
In the middle? Okay. That's for commercial?
Yeah, and residential. Residential, in our code, it's the midpoint between the top of the peak and the bottom of the eaves. And what, which is confusing a lot of times for people. And so what Rob has actually done in guidelines, sometimes he's actually spelled out, top of peak is X feet, to let people know. And we still have our underlying zone guidelines, which is thirty-five feet or two and a half stories for our residential zones. But in some cases, based on the architecture in the residential section, Rob has said top of peak, you know, higher than X feet, because it helps, it's a lot easier for people to understand top of peak sometimes.
Well, carrying on on that question, I'm looking at these points here under height on page twenty-one, and I see height for commercial buildings using a residential style and then apparently non-residential style above it. So I add those up, I get thirty-eight feet. You know, with the ten, if you have a sixteen-foot main floor, ten-foot second floor and third floor, main floor, second floor, I guess that'd be twenty-eight, and then you got ten feet for a third floor. The second floor height, ten-four, I guess, third floor, you still have ten foot height. So I guess my question is, how high with the regulations, I mean, how high can you go? And do they design, if there's a physical, if, how do I say this? If there's an architectural design on the top of that building, does that get measured to the top of that architectural design or to the top of the third floor roof?
That's a question, and I believe we address it, and I'm trying to find it. The idea actually is, in some sense, for the forty-five feet is to allow things, because we would measure it to top the, like the fire station, for example, that would be the height limit, the top of the tower, which is one of the reasons why the city commission wanted to allow the underlying zone height, just in case there was an architectural element. Just like the, if you look at the height for, single-story building is a minimum of sixteen feet. That's just for a single-story building. If you look for a multi-story building, you have a minimum of twelve feet on the ground floor and a minimum of ten feet for upper floors. The thought was, in this, talking to Denise, you start with a minimum twelve feet ground floor, maybe two ten-foot floors, and a four-foot parapet is thirty-six feet. So the change from thirty-six to thirty-eight, thirty-nine feet is of where are you putting your extra couple of feet? Maybe you have a taller ground floor, commercial, maybe you end up having eleven-foot floors for residential because you're a little higher, they want a little higher. So it's set thirty-six to thirty-nine feet is the kind of typical massing we would want in the residential, I mean, in Seventh Street for streetcar commercial.
Okay, so I guess, why can't we say then thirty-six or thirty-nine feet maximum for living space and then an additional X for architectural design? Because we don't want, personally, don't want to see a bunch of boxes going uphill. I would prefer something with some character, and I don't want to, I don't necessarily want to say maximum forty-five feet, because then it's going to try and squeeze the fourth floor in or for a penthouse.
Well, three stories is the underlying zone. So in order to four-story, they would actually have to come to the planning commission.
Okay, so let's say a third story, and with some architectural design that's going to make it unique to the neighborhood, or to the.
I can tell you, based on the work sessions we've had with the city commission and with discussions with our manager and community development director, there was a clear direction given to myself and the historic review board that at this time did not want to put an arbitrary height limit. They wanted to defer to the underlying zone and use the design guidelines for compatibility. That was the direction I was given.
Well, okay. I don't understand that. I understand, I understand, I'm a little confused about it, so I can imagine what a developer is going to be confused about. I personally, I live in the neighborhood, and I look at it every day, and I am concerned about having something that's out of character and out of proportion. I think these control that to some degree. I just, I tend to agree with Mr. Yates a little bit that these are, you know, they're, it's going to be a difficulty, and I think we'll be talking to the city commission, those developers will be talking to the city commission quite a bit. If something gets out of whack, or if it can't be resolved at the HRB, you know, but I guess if that's the city commission's position, you know, that they don't want to put a number on it, it's their meeting, they're going to have to deal with it, so it can come to us, clearly. So, but anyway, that's.
I mean, this, one of the hardest questions is, how do you create certainty and flexibility at the same time?
Well, how you do it, if you identify the height that you want, and then you have a little flexibility for architectural design. I mean, that would pretty much clear it up, I think, in my mind. If the, again, if city commission doesn't want to do that, and they're the body that will make this happen, then that so be it. But I personally think that you need to be more specific and as clear as you can. Having gone through development of all of these other areas up here, where we've had developers sitting in here, talking to us and saying, you can't do that, because if you do that, we're going to have problems. So we worked with this group, you know, worked with them for a long time to devise some programs and said, okay, well, here's what you can do, and if you choose to build this, then you're going to have to give us something else, you know? And it gives them some flexibility, but it always stayed within certain boundaries. And so I guess, I guess that's what I'm kind of looking at, is here's what we want. Make it to this height, and if you want to go over it with architectural design for something really cool and unique, so be it, bring it before us.
One thing I can suggest, which is what I did for the historic review board back also to the planning commission, is at September sixth, city commission works, I mean, the planning commission convinced tonight to support the resolution and maybe have end of comments that they want to pass on to the city commission. I mean, that can be one way of doing it. If the city, if the planning commission feels that there are certain issues that they want to reiterate or want the city commission to look at again, I mean, that can be tied to the resolution or just as a memo to send to the September sixth meeting.
Well, I have more comments, but we'll move on and let other folks talk.
Would you indulge me just a few minutes?
Of course I will.
Rick Winterhalter. Again, just to clarify a little bit what historic review board is concerned about, the flexibility is always there to go to the height of the underlying zone, to go to the forty-five feet, to address those types of things. Our biggest concern is that a forty-five foot now to a parapet, because it is the design that we would expect to see in that period. So a forty-five foot high is going to be, we're very concerned about the buildings that we see, are going to be massing and out of scale with those, with the buildings that exist. Will there be some that are higher that may have a tower or a parapet that bumps up a little bit or something like that, still maintaining? Yes, and those will, you know, will become historic review board, and we, you know, then have the opportunity to review that and allow it. I think our biggest concern is we're going to be, every, worst-case scenario, everyone's going to come in and want to be forty-five feet tall, the parapet to the underlying zone. And that's not what the guidelines say. And we could be wrong, I mean, that could be, you know, the Chicken Little approach and shaking your head. So, I mean, that's, we just want to, we always have the opportunity to go to forty-five feet, we just want to maintain. And certainly, as I said, and it's unfortunate that all the pictures, I should have said some, you know, they were all temporary examples, but some of them were certainly higher than thirty-four and thirty-six. You could have gotten three stories in some of those buildings, so, and that's not an issue for us.
Well, and in reality, I mean, if you're talking commercial, in reality, if you look at the commercial underlying zone, if you will, it's only two blocks or three blocks long.
A little longer than.
Because, well, okay, all the way up to like the Atlantic Sea. But beyond that, residential, so you have four blocks, maybe four blocks?
Goes to Van Buren.
Architecture. Architecturally.
Yes, architecturally.
So if someone came in and said, well, I want to build a forty-five foot, you know, building here, I mean, and it was up on the Van Buren spot, it really wouldn't be allowed because it doesn't fit within that architectural style of that area, does it? I mean, really, does it?
They're in a battle.
Exactly. And so that's, I guess that's where my concern is, because we're not being specific enough to cause, I mean, we're not being specific enough to cause people to say, okay, now I understand that in these three blocks, we can build this high, in these three blocks, we can build this high. Without getting it down, I mean, again, we're talking guidelines here, and that's the problem I have, where we can't be that specific, but yet we have to be.
And I think the board needs to err on the side of caution, that we're erring, we're saying the limit, this limit allows you to meet the proportion and scale of the historical significance of the area. If you go beyond that, you need to have a longer discussion. We need to really talk about what type of features you're talking about. Are you talking about a two-hundred-foot frontage, forty-five feet tall, with no, you know, architectural variation, no setbacks, something like that? Well, no, we're not going to, we're not going to allow that. Well, the underlying zone says I can do that. So we haven't been clear, and then are we in an appeal situation? That's our only concern. I mean, we're very supportive of these guidelines, where, you know, as you said, Mr. Chairman, that, you know, if this is clearly the direction, and staff clearly gave us direction, that this is how city wants to go for a year and look at it. We're just suggesting, well, can we flip that around and wait a year and go the other way? But we're supportive of moving these things forward.
Thanks. Yes, Christina.
One of the issues, one of the things that Rob Dornick was trying to build into this was discussion about all the different ways you can be compatible. Massing is one, height is one, architecture is the other, scale. And so that forty-five foot tall, two-hundred-long building could not, we can, there can be many other ways to deny that more than just height. Just the same as an out-of-proportion commercial structure on Van Buren. The design guidelines actually spell out and push residual design as you move uphill and to concentrate higher density of development within the close intersection of Washington and Seven. So we have that actually in the design guidelines. And one thing I kept reiterating to Rob is, if a project came in that was forty-three feet and was not, we felt not proportional, could we have line item lists of all the different ways it could potentially be denied? And I feel comfortable with staff that I could write a staff report that would deny it. Some sense, you know, say it is arbitrary, but we have a lot of background findings that I could create for denial of a project that has this, that has wrong massing, you say, that's math wrong. We can make findings for denial for that. That has nothing to do with height.
Okay, and that gives me a lot of comfort, to be honest with you. So, you know, hearing you say that, and hearing you say, what I was trying to say is, you're trying to consolidate more of that commercial growth at the Washington and Seven's area as opposed to up the hill. I'm at a higher level of comfort at this point.
Well, I just have to thank the people that put this together. I've had some involvement. And from our discussion here, it sounds like it's, you know, all we have is conflict, but if you look at the size of this document, it is a huge compromise, what do we want to make of it? And I guess I feel comfortable that we have guidelines, and yet we still have the code underneath that to kind of protect things. And it's real hard, because we're talking about prescriptive, as we talk of this, you know, detail versus what do you want to really have in the city? So we're kind of looking at both those. And I've had some concerns, you know, as you brought up there. But at this point, I think we have some flexibility that would allow to go ahead from here and see how this is going to play out for a year. And I make rash assumption that people are reasonable. And I think with this historic review board, developers, I think if it makes sense, it's a, we're going to avoid problems. I may be totally wrong, but hey, try it for a year and see what happens.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to, you know, I'd like to pipe in on, I think, quite frankly, this document is extremely prescriptive. And I say that in a good sense. It's, and it's an appropriate type of document. I mean, as an architect and actually as a modernist, you know, I have some difficulty sometimes with history, but yet I sort of find in our city that what actually we need right now is to more respect our historical context and bolster it up. But I think this document, if you take one line item and try and just group it out, is like with just the height, you can go in little circles, but the whole thing collectively holds, it'll actually give us what we're looking for. Historical proportion, massing, height, it'll sort of all take care of itself, because there's enough in here to surround a good product. So when it comes to the height thing, I think we need some flexibility, like we're talking about, okay, even talking about where is the first floor? If you've got a sloping site and that building's, let's say, a hundred feet wide, there may be several pads that have to step down, where's the first floor? Is it down here? The second floor may run straight. So I can just see all kinds of little things. As an architect, when I work through these things of how we're going to need some flex, a little bit of flexibility in the height because of these, if we were just talking flat sites, we could probably nail this down, but we're not. And I think that's where I think this works pretty well. I think it's, you know, by and large, I think this document really does get us to where we need it to go, because there's been some pretty, you know, pretty poor representation of new products in both these districts that, you know, that we're not looking for at all. And I think this will get us there, I really do. Yeah, so.
Any other comments?
I'm curious, Christina, at the work session, there was a language handed out that said the guidelines on mandatory standards, et cetera, and that's included in this document.
That will be included in this document.
So we have this document, and the people that worked on it need to be commended for doing, I think, a great job. I'm not an architect, but I can look through this document, and I get the sense of people are asking for. And I think that the resolution we're considering is also asking the historic review board to give some feedback over here in years' time. And I think that's going to be important feedback. So the parking issue, I think, isn't, could be addressed in this document, but I think it's something that we want to think about, but.
Thank you. Well, I'm, first off, I'm sorry I wasn't able to make the work sessions, because my comments probably could have answered there, so, and it wouldn't make you have to sit through this. But I do have some concerns, and I guess, first of all, I understand their guidelines, and that's where my problem is, because while there are guidelines, there's a lot of specificity, I think, when you're dealing with historic properties that we have to deal with. HRB can deal with it and does a great job of doing that, and then if they don't like that, it comes up through the process. I think we have the protection of that, and I'm pretty comfortable with that. I still think, I agree with Mr. Yates, there's a lot of touchy-feely in here, and it's hard, sure, I'm not a developer, it's hard to look at that and say, well, if I do this or that, what's going to be best, and how are we going to take it? And I know that's difficult, and it's costly, I'm sure, to have engineers and all these people putting things together and try and develop that. So I don't, I get, I'm torn, I want more specificity, but on the other hand, I also know it's a guideline, and it's been worked through by much brighter people than I, and very comfortable with that's going forward. I also live in the neighborhood, and so I'm very concerned, and I live one block off Seventh Street, so I'm very concerned about parking. I think that's probably our biggest downfall. Now, when we developed, worked on the Seventh Street corridor plan, as many of us did, we identified parking areas that could be used for future development, and I think we need to reevaluate that, and I. And I, and I've heard all of you say that, and I agree, and I think the planning commission should take a step and move forward and, and have that discussion with the city and, and start looking at properties and, and things that we need to do before we get in a situation where we're growing those properties, we sold those properties out, and there's no way we'll ever be able to fix it. And we'll all have parking permits, and that's not what anybody wants, especially me. My, my big concern, and, and I think you've answered it, was really, I, I just don't want everything to look alike. I don't want a bunch of square boxes going up the hill, I, I, I don't want infill that looks like something that doesn't belong there. And I think you've addressed that, and I, I'm, I'm really pleased with what I've read. I, the whole issue for me at the moment is, I think, and I'm sure it is for everybody else, I don't know how to get around that. Commission, the city commission's made their point, and they've made a statement, and, and they've directed HRB and staff to, to stick with, with, with the wording as we have it and, and not to change that. I disagree with that, I, I, I certainly won't disagree with the resolution, but I do have an issue with that, and I think, I would like at least a copy of these minutes to go with, forward with this resolution, if this board chooses to accept it, so that the, the city commission understands the concerns of, of the folks, and I'm sure you'll all be there talking about it again. But I do think that's something we really ought to reevaluate, for fairness to not only the developers, but out of fairness to the HRB who's going to have to sit through all these meetings, and then also the city commission. So I'd like to have that evaluated again at some point. Other than that, I guess that's, that's it for me. Other than to say thank you to everybody who's worked on this project, I like the comp plan that took us five years to do. It's, it's a lot of work and, and it's really an excellent job, from what I can tell and what I've read through it. So I'm very pleased, it only affects me.
Tim, just as a point of clarification, Alan, there was not a contention in this. If you misconstrued that from anything any of us said, I want to set the record straight. There was a lot of discussion back and forth, which is very, which was very healthy, but nobody was like, "oh, I hate this and, you know." We didn't have that. The only thing that we had a little bit of disagreement about was this height thing. And that's, yeah, it was the only, it's really the only item.
And I think it continues to be probably one of the only items that's out there. But, you know, my concern is if you, if you say forty-five feet, you will get thirty-five feet. You know, if you say thirty-seven feet, you will get thirty-seven feet. I mean, people will build to where they can build, I understand that, I mean, you're going to get what you can get.
Well, I strongly believe in, in working with some of these people, that there are people out there who will look at these design guidelines and they will follow them, because they know if, you know, I mean, there are unintended consequences if they don't. But I think most people who deal in the preservation field are not going to try to stuff something, someplace that doesn't work or doesn't belong. I mean, I know that, you know, the dollars are important, and all of this design will going to cost a whole lot of money. I would rather have somebody go to it cautiously and do it right the first time, because as I said, we're not going to get a second chance.
Oh, understandably, and, and I don't, and I don't disagree with that.
That's why it would, would have been great, you know, if we could have afforded it, somehow we, we get a little model of the whole, of the whole section, and we just put different built, you know, different massing things, see what that looks like. You know, and you can do that through computer now, but that would have been, but we didn't have the budget to do that.
Sure.
That would have been really good, because I think if you can see it, you can articulate it more, and you can say, "oh, yeah, that's what you mean by it." But right now, everybody's looking at forty-five feet, and how do, how do we know?
And again, you know, Denise, the, I, I would say that, you know, the, the city commissions have come and gone, plenty of commissions have come and gone, just about the only thing that hasn't come and gone is you, and you've been here forever since. I mean, you have all the memory, but, you know, if, if, we need to make this last a long time, and we need to make sure that, you know, whoever's sitting in HRB, whoever sits in the seat, whoever sits in staff, I mean, we need to make sure that this can carry through and, and we're not going to be battling this thing if ten years, twenty years from now. So the year is a nice, it's a nice touch that we were able to discuss this down the road, I'm comfortable with that. And I, and I ask that, that HRB, you know, please be open and, and discuss it with us, because I think that's going to be critical, as well as staff comments. You, you obviously are going to hear this long before we do. It's, it's no different than the, than the, you know, any of the other projects, programs that we have in here. The comp plan, we need to look at that, we can't wait twenty-five years again, we have to look at it every five years, and, and I think this is the same type of thing. And, and so that, that's all I have to say. Thank you so much, I value your help on that.
I'd like to move to, or to approve the resolution of support. So I have a question on the second RAS. I'm assuming the CN developers are using the same, rather similar set of standards? So, so on the, so is it the, it's the last line on that second RAS, developers, a similar set of?
Oh.
I would, I would change it, developers have same set of standards? Or are there, are there differences?
I think so.
Well, that's okay. It's understandable. So what is your, your recommendation?
Just change a similar to the same.
Okay. That is a motion.
We'll second it.
All right. Christina, we need to read this resolution publicly, or is this?
Probably, yeah.
Okay. Then I will do so, or would you like to do it?
Go ahead.
All right, then I will read this, I guess we'll do it before we, if there's any other questions. Planning Commission, Resolution Number Zero Six, that's zero one. A resolution supporting the historic review board's adoption of the proposed guidelines for new construction in historic districts. Whereas the City of Oregon City and its citizens value the preservation of its architectural heritage, compatible new construction will encourage public understanding and appreciation of the city's heritage, safeguard the heritage of Oregon City, enhance the visual character of the districts by constructing harmonious designs to reflect and support the character and style of buildings during the historic period, protect property values and away life, as well as owners and the community investment in the districts. Whereas the design guidelines serve two important purposes in the context of an overall preservation plan. First, they provide the historic review board and city staff with uniform standards and a framework on which to base design review decisions. Again, they provide property owners, designers, contractors and developers the same set of standards to allow for predictable planning and timely construction. Whereas the historic review board will design the design guid, will, sorry, will review the design guidelines one year from the adoption date to determine if the guidelines are functioning as intended. The historic review board will present the findings along with any additions or revisions to the planning commission and city commission for review and support. Be it resolved that the planning commission supports historic review board's adoption of the proposed guidelines for new construction in historic districts. Read at a regular meeting of the planning commission held on the twenty-eighth day of August, two thousand and six, and that is signed by myself as planning chair. We need a vote.
Ready to poll. Commissioner Lejois?
Aye.
Commissioner Gruner?
Aye.
Commissioner John?
Aye.
Commissioner Stein?
Aye.
Chairperson Powell?
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Thank you very much, thank you all, we appreciate it.
It came from.
Okay, so, I, I believe that's it, huh? Any, any comments from the board? Next to me, you, you don't have that at this point.
You have to memorize these names, you might need them.
Right, we'll jump right on that.
I do not know, actually, what the, the schedule of the next meeting.
Okay. Well, soon we'll be able to check that on our wonderful website, or Tony Conk will us know.
Yes, he will.
So we'll be in charge of that. Excellent, thank you all very much, we appreciate you coming this evening, and we are joined.
Thank you.